Okay, are we ready to call the order? All right, we're gonna call the meeting on March 3rd, 2015, to order for the Board of County Commissioners of Adams County. Can you please join me? Well, actually, let's do roll call first.
Commissioner Tedesco, Commissioner Odoricio.
Present.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanson.
Here.
Commissioner Palowski.
Here.
Can you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Palowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanson. Commissioner Odoricio.
Yes. Do we have any awards and presentations? Okay, we're gonna open this up for, open the floor up for public comment. Do we have any citizens that have signed up to speak?
We do have one person right now, and then the rest are for land use.
Thank you. And who's the first person?
Gene Putman.
Can I have Mr. Putman approach the podium? And do you need help with the microphone, sir?
No, I'm gonna stand. Adams County Commissioners, I'm Gene Putman. I am retired from the city of Thornton. I am a longtime transportation engineer. And the reason for me being here today is I'm a member of the National Committee on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. And about eighteen months ago, CDOT sent a person to me concerning lighted street name signs. And he came in and saw me, and his concept put light bulbs in my head. Right now, about fifty percent of all deaths occur at night, and fifty percent occur during the daytime. However, when you look at vehicle miles traveled, it's five times more vehicles traveled during the daytime than at night. With that comparison, you are five times more susceptible to being in a fatal crash at night as you are during the daytime. Nighttime is a problem, and I have been working for about the last year. I first went to the Federal Highway Administration Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Team. I got their blessing on this. They say it's compliant. They suggested that I do some research. In January, I talked to two members, one from the Transportation Research Board and one from the Texas Transportation Institute down in Texas. We have submitted a application to the Transportation Research Board to test these signs to find out if what we think will occur, will occur. On that sheet that was handed out, you'll see a, one sheet that shows images of the sign. One of them shows a set of signs during the daytime and one at night. You may have seen some signs that flash, like on stop signs show a red flash. However, the testing that's been done shows that that creates a lot of glare to the motorist, to the point where you cannot see the image for about three quarters of a second after the flash, because your pupils of your eyes dilate, and you can't see. So what I would like to ask is, under the manual, if you do testing, you have to have the approval of the agency that you would do to put the signs up, and I'd like to use Adams County. And as part of the application for funding research grant, I would like to ask that the county become an ally to this research project. And what we would do is provide the signs, do all the testing and what have you. I have one person that's working with us on this project. His name, David Keith. He is a fellow of the National Illumination Engineers Society. He is on the roadway lighting standards committee. He and I are working on this project. And so I would like to request that I be able to work with county staff, go over what I'm planning to do, and see if I can get a letter of support as an ally to this research. That's the end of my call.
Thank you, Mr. Putman. Do, it's my understanding that what might be most appropriate would be for us to follow up with the study session on this, but at this time, I offer the floor to any of our fellow commissioners to ask Mr. Putman questions that they might have, or make statements. Commissioner Henry.
Actually, I would like to make a statement. I'm all for absolutely being part of it. And I think before we do a study session, that Mr. Putman probably needs to get ahold of Ray Gonzalez and set up a meeting with him and have a conversation in regards to that.
We had a discussion this morning before this meeting.
Oh, well, I'll see how you are.
Is there anyone else? Commissioner Hanson?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's fine.
Oh, wow, that's nice.
We do have, looks like a demonstration at the back of the room.
Trying to tell us something?
Yeah. Tell us to stop.
This, this is David Keith.
Or is that a message for Gene?
He is the, he is the one who is on the Illumination Engineering Society. He is one of the cohorts in this project on these signs. And he picked it up today at the manufacturer in Boulder and brought it down here. I wanted you to be able to see what it looks like.
That's, that's great. I think that's interesting. I, we have some similar things in my house at Christmas. I, the, I'm sorry. I, I think it's fine. And actually, it doesn't sound like it's gonna cost any time or resources, and I don't even think I personally feel like I need a study session if, if our staff is okay with it. I'm okay with the study session, too, if there's more to be decided, but if it costs no time and no resources, I don't see any resi, why, reason why we wouldn't wanna be a part of it.
At this time, unless there's somebody who disagrees, I heard kind of some up here, most of the commissioners would agree with that assessment, that we'll let Mr. Putman work with staff, and if the staff feels that a study session is necessary, then they can let us know. Otherwise, I think you're hearing us say, "Good luck, work with staff," and we look forward to seeing how this turns out.
Great, very good.
Thank you, Mr. Putman.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gene.
Are there any other public comments or communication not relating to a hearing, or to one of the cases that we'll have later? Hearing none, then we'll move on. Are there any communications from elected officials? All right, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanson. Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Odoricio.
Yes. At this point, we're gonna move on to new business. Do we have any updates from the county manager?
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. We have three items for your consideration this morning. The first one is a resolution accepting a proposal from Family Tree Incorporated for providing housing and domestic violence services for temporary assistance for needy families, commonly referred to as TANF. Heidi Ellis is here, and she will talk to it with purchasing.
Good morning, Commissioners. You have before you a copy of the memo and resolution for the agenda item I'm presenting on Family Tree, Inc. The Adams County Human Services Department currently provides programs that are designed to stabilize, strengthen, and connect children and families with community services. The Human Services Department received the Temporary Assistance for Needy Family Grant, which is a TANF grant, from the federal government to assist with the goals of the Human Services Department's Children and Family Division's Program Services. A request for proposal was performed for the services of a qualified organization to provide housing and domestic violence services for TANF. The solicitation was posted on Rocky Mountain E-Purchasing System on January 9th, 2015, and closed on January 27th, 2015. One proposal was received from Family Tree, Inc., and it was evaluated with the following criteria: the offer's ability to provide domestic violence shelter and counseling to adults and children, the offer's fee structure, and the organizational operation budget. Family Tree received ninety-five percent score on their proposal. Purchasing and the human service staff reviewed the firm's fees, and it was determined their fees are considered fair and reasonable for the scope of services. Purchasing is in an agreement with the award recommendation to Family Tree, Inc., in the amount of $114,540 for the first year of services.
Do we have any questions from the Commissioners? Any questions from staff? All right, at this point, do I hear a motion to approve the resolution accepting proposal from Family Tree Incorporated to provide housing and domestic violence services for temporary assistance for needy families?
Commissioner Hanson.
Hi.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Palowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Odoricio.
Yes. Thank you very much, Ms. Ellis.
Thank you.
Our next item is a resolution approving addendum one with Eon Enterprises Incorporated, DBA Eon Office Products for annual office supplies. Ben DiRamanis.
DiRamanis, close enough.
DiRamanis, that was close. With purchasing, if you're talking to that as well.
Good morning. In 2013, the county posted a solicitation on Rocky Mountain E-Purchasing System, seeking a primary contractor to supply all county departments with their annual office supplies. After a thorough RFP evaluation process that included multiple county departments, the contract was awarded to local Denver contractor, Eon Enterprises, for one year with the option of renew for two additional years. By using Eon Enterprises Incorporated as its primary provider of office supplies, the county has improved tracking and control of its annual office supply expenditures with the purchasing department continually monitoring usage. During the initial year of the contract, Adams County has been generally pleased with the service provided by Eon Enterprises. Given this, it is recommended that Adams County renew its contract for the second term with Eon Enterprises Incorporated to be the primary provider of annual office supplies for an estimated amount of $122,088.30.
Are there any questions from the Commissioners? I have Commissioner Palowski.
Thank you, Vice Chair, I appreciate that. I'm just, this is kind of my bias, I guess, overall, and it has nothing really specifically to do with this, but I assume that this company is from, in Adams County? Is it located in Adams County?
No.
No?
It's in Denver. I'm not sure of the actual Adams County address, or if it has in Adams County. Let's see.
I, I just, I would like us to support our local businesses as much as possible, and that's just an overall blanket statement for staff, whenever it's possible that that's what we need to do. I, it's my belief. It's our Adams County taxpayer dollars, and I'd like to see them stay as local as possible. Just in general, a comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Palowski. I have Commissioner Hanson has a comment or question.
Hanson?
I mean, Henry. I got Han, 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 Han right here, I'm sorry. Henry.
I know we look alike.
I've been called, yes.
You know.
Actually, you know, Commissioner Palowski, it's possible that we could do a study session. I'd like to see us where we actually give local businesses a couple of extra points for being in Adams County, and that would give them a little bit more of a leg up to compete with companies outside the county. So that would be, I'm also interested in something like that. That's the only way that the purchasing department would be able to help.
Right.
In doing that and making it fair.
And then, and just to add on to that, people don't know where I guess I come from or where I sit, and so I just wanted to just throw that out. So it's nothing specific on what we're talking about necessarily today, it's just in general, if we can kind of look at something like that, I'd really appreciate it. So, thanks anyway.
Commissioner Hanson? Would you like, you have a question?
Question about this, I, you know, there's been some controversy in the past associated with our office supplies, specifically as it relates to some of our other elected offices, you know, had concerns about, you know, wanting to use the vendors that they typically use or finding particular office products that were cheaper with someone else as opposed to the preferred vendor, and so I, I just wanna know what we've, you know, done, you know, what, what the experience was over the last year in terms of the utilization of this supplier, organization-wide, and secondarily, what, if you've reached out to the, since we basically turn over virtually every elected official, as it is anyway, talk to them about this contract and their, their usage of it.
Have, have we reached out to, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the exact question that you were?
Commissioner Hanson, if you could clarify specifically what the question is, so, 'cause I think I heard a couple of them in there.
There were two questions.
Right.
And I said, actually, there are two questions. The first question is, is what's the usage of this contract by our other elected officials last year? And secondly, have we reached out to the current elected officials about this contract?
I haven't reached out. I do know our expenditures for last year were $119,245.15.
I see some people commiserating over there. They might be bailing you out, or they might be saying, "We've got information for you later." They might just leave you up there.
Yeah, this wasn't my project originally, so.
Sorry.
That's okay. And if you could state your names for the record, and then.
Kim Rollin, purchasing manager.
Thank you, Kim. Go ahead and please help us.
We do try to incorporate the entire county's usage with Eon. It is not an exclusive contract where we can go out to other suppliers if we need to for certain things, but we typically get, at least on an annual basis, if not more often, a report from Eon that does show our complete usage. So we are seeing more and more individuals throughout the county using this.
'Cause, 'cause I, you know, I, every time I look out in the audience, I see people that have been here eighteen months or less. And I, and I want you to understand that this office supply contract has been extraordinarily controversial over the last three to four years. And the reason why it's been controversial is just because a lot of our fellow elected officials basically just wanted to do and purchase things the way they wanted to purchase things, you know, whether it be a copier or a pencil. It didn't really, it didn't really seem to matter. And it had been a struggle in the past to get people to do it, because the more usage we have, you know, the better prices that we're going to get. And at the end of the day, that's the whole purpose of doing a contract like this in the first place, is to be able to kind of bring everything together and provide the best value and best service that we can for, for our office supplies. And at $119,000, that doesn't seem like that's very many office supplies for an organization of our size. So my, my guess is, there's a lot of people that are not using that contract, so I wanna know, 'cause I, I have a concern about that, because if people are going out and using their finances, using their, their budget on office supplies that may or may not be the best price or the best value or what we contracted for, that can be a problem for the organization. And because we have so many new elected officials, I think it would be appropriate for us to, you know, engage them, you know, right now to talk about how we can utilize this. So maybe I have more institutional knowledge.
Sure.
Than other people do, but, but that's been the situation in the past.
Commissioner, it sounds like from this item, we have potentially two items to talk to you about the study session. And so what we'll do, we'll come back to study session, and we'll talk about the advantages and disadvantages of sort of, you know, the first issue of purchasing and giving priority to local companies. We'll also come back and give you a report on total office expenditure spend and how much of it's Eon. And proactively, we'll go out and make sure we're communicating with the other offices.
I appreciate that. I mean, it, you know, there's a lot of opportunities now, I think, to work with people. I think that sometimes the previous group, you know, just, well, they had a different worldview, I guess. And, and, you know, I, I think it's an opportunity to work with people, so I appreciate, you know, doing that. I have no problem with this contract, incidentally. That's more of a general comment about, you know, some of the issues that have been in the past.
Okay.
And did it, was this a competitive bid process in this situation?
Originally, yes.
And so part of the conversation, maybe when we talk about the process for supporting local, and that could include this as an example of, of the vendors who are, were involved in this particular case, and.
I don't think there were any local vendors on the original contract.
And that's part of the challenge, is that we wanna support local, and if there isn't a local vendor available, that obviously has a.
My, my point would be, this may not be the best example because of that.
Sure. But I still think that the scoring, analysis of the scoring system is a good approach. And then overall, the policy direction expressed by Palowski and Henry makes sense. And then the utilization of shared services is the second part among the other. Thank you.
Yes.
Is there anything else? Okay, at this time, I have a question for the Commission. Is there anyone who moves to approve resolution approving addendum one with Eon Enterprises, Inc. doing business as Eon Office Products for the annual office supplies?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Palowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanson.
Right.
Commissioner Odoricio.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you, Ben. Our third item this morning is resolution accepting a proposal from CareHere LLC to provide healthcare services for the employee health clinic. Heidi Ellis is here again with purchasing.
Good morning again, Commissioners. My name is Heidi Ellis, purchasing agent. You have before you a copy of the memo and resolution being presented by me for the employee health clinic provider. On July 1st, 2014, and February 17th, 2015, the Human Resources Department met with the Board of County Commissioners to discuss the county's interests in an employee's health clinic in order to enhance the current health benefits package. County staff conducted a number of onsite visits to existing successful clinics run by other local governments. The county is interested in adding one or two onsite or nearsite clinics to support the current employee population and integrate, integrate the current wellness program. The health clinic interest stems from the county managers, management's serious concern about the escalating healthcare cost and their willingness to explore alternatives which might positively impact the county's healthcare trends while providing employees new and cost-effective options to address their healthcare needs. The clinic's objective will focus on reducing healthcare trends, improve healthcare outcomes, both aggregate and individual, increase employees' productivity, reduce absenteeism, provide fit-for-duty, workers' compensation triad, full workers' compensation, and drug testing. The onsite or nearsite clinics is intended to be available to all benefit eligible employees and benefited covered dependents. In addition, the selected healthcare clinic provider will have experience and expertise that will enable them to assist Adams County in lowering the cost of its healthcare wire while creating employee engagement and satisfaction. The request for proposal for the employee health clinic was posted on Rocky Mountain E-Purchasing on August 9th, closed on September 4th, 2014. Six proposals were submitted. They were evaluated on costs, business operation and services, business experience qualification and their approach, quality of performance, reporting and data management. There were two offers shortlisted, CareHere LLC and HealthStat, Inc., based upon their scores received for their submitted proposals. Each offer was sent a letter with clarification questions for responses on their health clinic and an interview with the evaluation committee. Offerer's scores are based upon their written proposal, the interview, and the best and final offer's responses. The scores for CareHere, Inc., LLC was 1939, and HealthStat, Inc. was 1893.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. Do we have any questions from the county Commissioners? There's a question from Commissioner Hanson.
I'm just trying to reconcile the numbers here on the fiscal impact piece of it. It says the annual operating cost is $380,000, which is roughly half of the 760. I'm kind of assuming, reading that information, that we're anticipating about six months of operation, and that's why it is half of that annual amount. Is that correct?
Yeah, Brian Ossler, Human Resources Director. Commissioner Hanson, yes, that is correct. We're anticipating the clinic to be open by summer, midsummer, 2015.
That's, that's what I thought, because when you look at the expenditures and the approved budget of $650,000 and the capital budget of $100,000, that's also roughly in the same amount, so I wasn't sure if it was matching to that one or the other one. So we really think that it's only $100,000 in capital money to, to get that clinic up to speed?
Yeah, that's correct. So we're gonna utilize the conference center. We already have, a lot of the walls already up. We're working with facilities right now. I think that's a pretty, pretty good estimate. There's not a whole lot of refurbishing or construction that we need to do, other than bringing in some, probably some electrical and some, some plumbing in there.
I was just kind of surprised, because, you know, medical equipment can be kind of expensive. So is that included in, in this cost, too?
It's included in the cost. It's, it's the startup cost within, you know, everything that's included. You know, as they state there, the, I think it's, the annualized cost is $757,000. Startup cost for it is roughly about $35,000. And so the, the clinic, the vendor, the vendor will take care of all of that.
So the vendor's gonna provide all of that?
Correct.
Essentially, so we don't have to provide that?
Correct. We do buy it, but they, they do all of that for us.
Okay. And, and I assume they want an agreement with some, you know, level of renewals, and if they're gonna put money upfront onto it, you know, that, that means that they're more into it from a, from a risk standpoint. So, you know, what do we anticipate hearing in the subsequent years, since we can't do more than annual appropriation?
Yeah, so the subsequent years, so year two, the anticipated annualized cost would be about $709,136. Year three would be about $727,000, or seven, 727,044.
So what you're saying is, is that $35,000 cost for medical equipment, we're actually paying for. So does that mean that we own that equipment at the end? If, if they don't continue, or.
Correct.
We bring in another vendor, or we don't do the program, that means we own that equipment?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, I understand, thanks.
Are there any other questions from the Commissioners? Do I hear a motion to approve resolution accepting proposal from CareHere LLC to provide healthcare services for the employee health clinic?
So moved, Commissioner.
Second. Commissioner Palowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanson.
Hi.
Commissioner Odoricio.
Yes.
And could I add?
Yes.
Vice Chair.
Commissioner Palowski.
We had a really nice presentation made at our study session regarding this, so for those in the audience who think we don't ask questions, we did there. So anyway, they gave a great presentation, and I think this is gonna be very beneficial for the employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Let me add something else.
And Commissioner Hanson?
I wanna ask a question, because I, actually, I think that this was asked at one point to be presented, and it never was. It, it wasn't today, I shouldn't say, because, you know, some of the controversy that could potentially arise from a project like this, which is, you know, fairly expensive in terms of the amount, is, why are you doing this? And, and, you know, there was an analysis done in terms of the return on investment, and frankly, it should have been part of this presentation, because we should be discussing these kinds of things in a more public forum like this, and not just in a study session when it is an expenditure that's this big, and it's related specifically to, you know, employee benefits, and a lot of people are gonna question whether or not that's a good idea. So can you talk a little bit about, and I apologize for adding this onto it, Jan, but you reminded me, can you talk a little bit about, you know, what, what we're trying to accomplish and what the return is with this?
Yes, absolutely, Commissioners. One of the things, too, to note, it is in the, the agenda items, the presentation and stuff, so that is available, you know, for the public to view on the website. The key, the key principle with this is that, you know, over the last three or four years, as, as most organizations within Mountain State stated, one of the biggest concerns for any public entity is the, the rising cost of healthcare. We're, we're not immune to that. We've experienced some, some increases over the last couple of years. And, and the whole point, just this last year as a good example, we're about $1.5 million over budget. So that's taken into account for our United Healthcare Plan, our self-funded, that all of the premiums that we collect, and then the claims that we have to pay out, we were about $1.5 million short. And, and that has to do with a lot of different factors. But some of the key factors is that we're seeing within, as with most organizations in, in the Denver metro area and even nationally, some of the leasing, leading cost indicators are things that we've identified within our, our employee populations, such as obesity, depression, diabetes, heart disease, and back pain. The whole fundamental prin- The whole fundamental principle behind a health clinic is that we believe that over the years, we can control these claims a little bit better. We can be more proactive and strategic in that sense. The, the health clinic will allow us to understand what our current employee population is in terms of high risk, low risk, or no risk, by doing a, a health risk assessment, biometric screening. So the average employee that needs to go to the health clinic to treat, you know, a sore throat, they'll go there and, and they'll spend about eight minutes treating the acute issue, and the rest of the time, they will be addressing chronic disease management. If, if an employee is close to pre-diabetic, they will be able to help incentivize them to be able to come back over to a more healthy, a more productive employee, which then leads to lower claims in the future. That's the fundamental principle behind a health clinic. We believe, within, you know, two to three years, we will see a substantial return on investment for the dollars that we're putting into this. Within the first year, with the experience of, of the companies that are out there, you're looking at about, for each dollar that you put in, getting back a dollar and 42 cents. And again, as time goes on and as employees change those behaviors, and we manage those chronic disease better, then you'll see a larger return on investment. In particular, the ones that we looked at from other organizations within year three, four, and five, you see a substantial return on investment for that money.
So it sounds like that there's, that really what's driving this is the fiscal impact and the long-term fiscal benefits to help justify the people benefits. Is that correct?
That's correct. I mean, they play hand in hand. It's so important to have healthy employees and healthy dependents. And, and you get a more productive employee, you get a happier employee, and so as part of that, that really ties into the fiscal impact. By employees that are healthier, they're not going to have these larger claims that are, are our issue right now as an organization.
I think what we're finding out, and this is Steve Odoricio, we're finding that more access to healthcare in these clinical environments is starting to pop up in a lot of locations where there are a lot of employees. We're also finding them in schools, community centers. And so part of the presentation that I specifically remember when you came during that study session covered that, that this is a growing trend to address these issues more proactively, try to obtain some long-term economic benefits to address, I guess, to counter some of those rising costs of healthcare. In addition, just simply, it's another benefit for our employees, which I think we're finding is a significant and a lot, and a good goal for us to move toward, not only for productivity, but also support for our greatest assets, which are the people that work for us. So I want to thank you for that. The last question I would have, though, is where would somebody obtain, a citizen obtain this presentation if they wanted to? Would it be that they would go and find the agenda item from the study session? Or if you could tell on the record where a citizen could get the presentation that you're referring to?
Yeah, so I do believe it's, it's not, okay. Well, I'll, we'll work internally, and we'll, we'll make it available and as part of the agenda item.
Okay, so it could either be added to the agenda item for today and/or added to the link on the day the study session occurred on this particular matter, or either way, if you could post that, it sounds like staff can make that happen. Thank you very much. Is there any other que, are there any other questions from the commissioners? With that said, I appreciate it. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Are there any updates from the county attorney?
Good morning, commissioners. No new business, but I would ask that you go into executive session today, as time allows, pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute 246402 for B and E, for the purpose of negotiations and receiving legal advice regarding potential development at DIA.
Do I hear a motion to, do I hear, does anybody move to approve that motion to adjourn into executive session pursuant to the Colorado Revised Statute described by the county attorney?
So moved.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanson?
Hi.
Commissioner Palowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Odoricio?
Yes. Is there, is there any other new business? We're going to move on to land use, land use hearings. At this time, we're going to adjourn for five minutes. Would that be enough? Five minutes for us to get set up, and we'll re-adjourn at 10:10 a.m. Thank you.[1774.15]